Okay, seeing it's past the 10 o'clock hour, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all of their special assessments and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Supervisor Finnegan, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any new employees to be introduced? Okay, seeing no introduction of new employees, we will counsel any reportable action from closed session.
Not this morning.
Okay. Okay, at this point, are there's any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action for the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Okay, so at this point, we're going to go on to, we're going to hear brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor Finnegan, would you like to start?
Sure. After our last meeting, I attended a roundtable put on by the Emerging Technology Fund, California Emerging Technology Fund, in conjunction with the League of Cities, RCRC, and also CSAC, State Association of Counties, regarding broadband, regarding the underserved, which, you know, the underserved is not necessarily the rural communities, the underserved is the impoverished. Fifty-five percent of the people who don't have broadband is for no other reason other than they can't afford it. So, we're looking at strategies, how it affects the economy, how it affects low-income housing, just everything throughout the state, so informing partnerships there, talk about users as well as policymakers. Then I had an opportunity to go to Brookings, and there, they have the Traveling Road Show like we used to do with their commissioners, supervisors. And it was put on with, they had a presentation with Charter Communications and also John Irwin regarding the status of the broadband redundancy. A great presentation, the, you know, and I'm not good at the numbers, you know, where if you have, what is it, gigabytes, three or four, it's supposed to be fast, well, they were going into 10, and I don't know what, and actually, the Charter guy said, "No, it's not 10, it's more like 720." So, it's just, I guess the comparison that John Irwin used to say is, if we were the lead in the pencil, and then most people, when they get to be the pencil, they think they're doing good, well, we're going to have a culvert that you could drive a ship through. So, the speed and the capacity is just going to be phenomenal, better than anywhere, and just as good, if not better, than Portland and San Francisco. So, going to be pretty amazing. The first of the year, it will be finished, it will be finished because they had to stop for little things like the mating season of the spotted owl, the Darlingtonia plant, and a little of this and a little of that. They will be finished by the first of the year, and then they will be making a presentation in front of this board, letting you know what's there and how great it would be and what the opportunities are. So, not just telemedicine, economic development, just in general. Then attended an RDA, the Oversight Committee, which was the redevelopment agencies disbanding and figuring out what to do with the assets. Attended a Port SAR search and rescue, getting that rolling again, especially with the harbor up and running, and talking about really enhancing the Coast Guard presence here because they're gone a good portion of the time. Attended Euron two-by-two with Supervisor Hemmingson, the topic was the sheriff, and 911 calls, dispatching, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to be following up with that, as well as the current MOU, trying to see if we can work out something there for better coverage and public safety for the Klamath area. Also, then had an airport JPA, both closed session and a regular session, just basically a status update where we are, and we're planning the workshop for the financial workshop, to talk about what it's going to cost, where are we going to get the money, how are we going to afford this to the community. Went to Eureka for a dinner with Strategies First Five and the Courts, talking about cultural diversity and awareness, and then also had several officer calls with CSAC, getting prepared for the state annual meeting next week, and also had an opportunity to go down and spend some time with my dad, although it was for his older brother's funeral, who lived well into his 90s, but it was nice to see the family and spend some time together, a couple old vets. And that was about it.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. As Supervisor Finnegan stated, we had a Euron Tribe two-by-two, most of the discussion had to do with dispatching services, and also the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. We didn't have a quorum, so we took care of no business, but we did have some discussions on financing and the workshop, upcoming workshop. I filled in for Chair Sullivan for Agenda Review. I went, on a personal note, went to Fort Worth, Texas, to attend a wedding for a local gal, and while there, had a good time. Texas is a great place, the stockyards in Fort Worth are well worth seeing, as well as we went to Dallas.
Billy Bob's.
Yeah, well, we didn't go to Billy Bob's, but we went to Dallas, and of course, went to Dealey Plaza, and then went out to South Fork, of course, to see the Ewing family. But, we had a good time, it was a lot of fun, so it was nice to get there. Went to, or got the opportunity to meet the Japanese consulate, the whole boat thing that floated over from Japan, Mr. Watanabe, I think was his name, very, very pleasant, pleasant gentleman, nice to be part of that little photo op. And went to a, had a Sustainable Forest Action Coalition meeting in Willows. That group is continually expanding, I think I've reported before, we're 20 rural counties in California, there's also counties from Oregon, Washington, Wyoming, Colorado, I think, as well as legislators who are involved with that group. We are making some headway on getting policy changes within the Forest Service. One example is we had Chico State working on a socioeconomic study for us, so that they would incorporate that into their policy. They've been kind of ignoring the whole process of socioeconomic impacts, and they are now looking into that. I also am a member of Nortech, we didn't have a meeting, but an outfit called Milestone in Chico is going to add another 205 jobs. That's going to bring their total up to 500 jobs that they've just put on this this year, and it's been in the last few months. So, on November 16th, there is a, there is a job fair over there, if you're in need of employment, or if you know somebody that's over there, you might put them onto that. I also attended the Veterans' Day Parade yesterday, well-attended, a lot of stuff in the parade this year, I think more than normal, band uniforms, new band uniforms, looked great. It was very enjoyable, enjoyed going, and that was about it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin? Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Since I've been supervisor, this has probably been the busiest three-week period since I've been in office, and I'll try to summarize as best I can, a lot has taken place. Immediately after the 22nd meeting, we attended our solid waste management meeting, and of course, the subject was the interim consultant, and we're working on that, we're moving slowly and deliberately, there's a lot at stake here. Tried to leave town the next day to go down to a conference, which Supervisor Finnegan, you already left, you picked out, a day earlier, we couldn't get out of town, it was the third annual conference on public safety realignment. Tried Wednesday, plane couldn't land, tried waiting for another plane, couldn't get there, and that's just the way it is, we were fogged in. So, sorry to say, I missed that important meeting. St. Joseph Polish Oktoberfest on October 26th. Angela and I attended the Polish Oktoberfest at the fairgrounds. Father Kotas and the parishioners at St. Joseph's had a great event, was attended by some 500 people, they turned 150 people away, lots of Polish folklore, dancing, good stories, and of course, delicious Polish sausage, great event. Local transportation, excuse me, Local Area Formation Committee, we met on the 28th. Top on the agenda was the discussion of the closing of the deficit of the Smith River Cemetery District. The district has been invited to our next LAFCO meeting to discuss remedies to close the deficit, and based on my understandings, the solution to the fix is very much attainable. Heard a report from the Visitors Bureau, since they normally close on Saturdays after Labor Day, they kept the doors open on Saturdays for the month of October, and an addition, a total of 2,179 visitors came in during that month. That's a 34% increase over 2012, and that's also additional income, so congratulations to Jeff Palmer and the Visitors Bureau and staff, great job. Met with Superintendent Don Olson Tuesday with a parent of Best Maxwell School. Pupil was representing several different parents, expressing concern about children safely walking to and from Best Maxwell over the marked crosswalk, which is at Dream and El Dorado. There, as you know, there is only one crosswalk assignment, one crossing guard assigned to that area, and we're waiting for a report back from the Local Transportation Commission, which is currently reviewing that site, and at Redwood School, to see about the possibility of intervention, may possibly be looking at a stop sign there to make sure that people are not blowing through that crosswalk there. Also, while I was there, I learned from Superintendent Olson that a citizenship award for a male and female student of all nine district schools will be sponsored by the Masonic Lodge. Very excited to tell you about this event, this situation. The Masonic Lodge 46 will recognize the top male and top female students in the district who excel academically, display high moral character, and work ethic. There'll be nine male and nine female recipients, plus one male and one female awardee in the district overall, so a total of about 20 students will be awarded, and I'm understanding it's a cash award. So, I want to thank the Masonic Lodge 46 for stepping up to set the example in our community for our youth to follow. Same evening, I accompanied members of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Last Chance Grade. Co-Chair Kurt Strenberg and former supervisor Chuck Blackburn presented a request to the Smith River Rancheria Tribal Council in requesting a letter of support to the Local Transportation Commission urging Caltrans to hold, to actually build the road around Last Chance Grade. The letter of support was unanimously passed by the council, and on Wednesday, we repeated the same process and went down to Elk Valley Rancheria, and that tribal council unanimously supported the writing of a similar letter of support to build the road around the precarious Last Chance Grade. This united support from the tribes for the alternate route carries very profound impact on our elected state and federal representatives, who ultimately will have to find the money to build this vital link between Del Norte County and All Point South. With Supervisor Hemmingson, we welcome Japanese Vice Council Watanabe. It was Halloween Day, I got a chance to practice my, a little bit of my Japanese, did not cause an international incident. The issue, of course, was retrieving the small boat that floated across 5,400 miles of Pacific Ocean, ended up here in Crescent City, and that boat has been returned to the folks in Japan. I want to recognize Pastor Ed Fleishman, attended his retirement sermon for, at North Baptist Church on Washington, he's been doing this for 32 years. Pastor Ed has been at the pulpit, and Angie and I wish Pastor Ed and wife Martha the very best. Travelled up to Brookings last Thursday to meet Jason Conger, he's the candidate for U.S. Senate, a former Del Norte County resident. He addressed a group of about 50, and I wish him well in his bid for election to the U.S. Senate from the Beaver State. Went down to Chico to meet with, attended dinner for Doug Lamolfe. The representative is not our representative here, but we wanted to show him support for his kickoff dinner, for his reelection to California's first congressional district. The A1 Agency on Aging in Eureka, we met last week, attended our bimonthly Area One Agency meeting. At the meeting, I learned some new demographic projections for both Humboldt and Del Norte County. Del Norte County can expect as much as a 25% increase from currently about 6,000 seniors in our county to approximately 8,000 seniors over the next six years. Seeing to the needs of seniors will reshape our community and will affect housing and career opportunities, so I've invited Executive Director Maggie Kraft up to Del Norte County to make a presentation to the board, most probably in January. Veterans' Day, and evening was a very busy day yesterday. I attended the Veterans' Day activities, including the parade down 8th Street. In the evening, it was my honor to emcee the dinner, which featured guest speakers Siskiyou County Sheriff John Lopey. The entire day was very humbly an experience for me, as able to help honor our great veterans who sacrificed so much so that individuals such as myself can enjoy a high quality of life. The dinner was rousing success, biggest in 15 years, standing room only, we served 285 meals last night, and big thanks to both Del Norte County Rotary Clubs, the Crescent City Lions Club, and the Masonic Lodge 46 for their financial support in feeding the veterans, who of course, ate for free. Blight news is in the news, received a number of calls from Del Norte County vigilant citizens reporting blight about our county. One came from Willie McCauley, he's a wood sculptor, raised martial arts on South 101, called me about some trash and debris was dumped right near that particular business. He bagged the trash, he called me, asked for some assistance in picking it up, and of course, we moved our schedule around to make sure that we could help get rid of some of that trash that was sitting not far off the road, and want to recognize Willie and citizens like him for calling in, and I encourage all to please continue to call me, or Code Enforcement Officer Dave Mason. Blight is embarrassing and completely unacceptable to Del Norte County to settle for any graffiti or blight in our community. Also, I want to give kudos to the city for a successful cleanup behind the shopping center just northeast of the S-curve. I received calls of appreciation for the cleanup in the city-owned property on Cooper Street, which is just south of the cemetery. Also, on Second and D, noticed some work was being done on the building there, an old eyesore property, and the property owner has cleaned up this property. This is the old Alexander and Daughter's Fish Processing Plant. My understanding, the newly refurbished building will be an art school, an art gallery, so. And finally, I have received the Camden Report on the future of Sutter Coast Hospital. I can't say as I'm surprised by the predictable outcome of this report recommending devolvement of the status of the hospital from acute care to critical access and moving management out of our local community and relocating to the Bay Area, no surprise there, but I am disappointed. The results of the report were delivered in a kind of a midweek webinar, when many of us are at work and actually don't even have access to a computer. The question in my mind still lingers, if Sutter Hospital is losing millions as it claims, why is this $10 billion-plus not-for-profit Sutter Health Corporation spending so much money to take ownership of our hospital? I have to continue to express my dissatisfaction that this $170,000 study for Sutter Health Corporate did not focus any emphasis on showing the community a roadmap to work toward retaining the current acute care status, rather than dwelling on the corporation's bottom line, which rewards a higher patient reimbursement for Medicare patients. If the hospital lowers its status to critical access, one cannot ignore the fact that Del Norte County, as we mentioned before, can anticipate a 25% growth of its senior population over the next six years. Patient care is and should be the priority, and I'm a little saddened that the Sutter Health folks didn't, lost a wonderful opportunity to maintain in this report the highest quality of medical service, it failed to explore viable paths to actually improve this service, a little disappointed. The discussion on Sutter Coast Hospital is far from over. Chair Sullivan?
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to be a little, I had, actually been out for nasal surgery for the last week and a half, so if I sound like a cold, I don't actually have one, I'm just still, swelling's still coming down, so mine wasn't as busy as the rest of the supervisors for the last two weeks. So, attended a special Del Norte solid waste management meeting where we basically finished up the request for proposal that has been put out, and we're hoping to get a consultant in to give us some suggestions on that. Also, I want to thank Supervisor Hemmingson for sitting in for Agenda Review, that was right during my recuperation period, so thank you for doing that. Had an interview with Jim Height at the California Center for Rural Policy, and I think Supervisor Finnegan was interviewed also, regards to the broadband situation and how we've arrived at where we're at. It is ironic that we're still waiting for this final week to complete the redundancy, but here's, you know, knock on wood, for the first of the year. So, but we are close, and I know we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other rural counties, so that continues to be one of the, that is the dot com and has 199.com, the five projects in the, in the community that are, that is finally coming to a conclusion, and one of the bright spots that we can point out in the last 10 to 13 years that is coming to fruition. Also, participated, not in the Vets Parade, that, yesterday was very well done, the weather cooperated, everything, we, I hosted a coffee social after the Veterans Parade at my office. The Veterans Parade went on, usually in the past, it's been like five, 10 minutes and it's done. This went on for a good half an hour, I mean, that shows you how much more participation was in, in it this year, and it was a very impressive event to see, and should be that way. Also, attended the Vets Dinner, however, unless you got there early, you, basically, they turned a lot of people away for, they just didn't have enough food. The place was standing room only, as Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, and so I took my son, we went, got something to eat, and came back, and a very impressive speaker, and just a great event that's gotten some new life breathed into it, so it was an impressive event. On a, on a Saturday note, we had a couple people pass in Del Norte County that were important parts of the community. One was Hank Westbrook, Hank Westbrook's one of the pioneering members of the community, and had, will be sorely missed, he'd been a vital part of Del Norte County forever. And the, and so we do want to pass on our condolences and sympathies to the family. The other person who passed away, coincidentally, this was literally just, you know, within days of each other, was Bruce Connor, and he passed away and developed cancer and was gone really quickly after that, so Bruce was a good guy, if you knew Bruce, he was, always had a smile on his face and was always there to help, so once again, we want to pass our sympathies on to the family on that, so. Okay, so at this point, I will-
Chair Sullivan, if I could just real briefly, Supervisor Gitlin reminded me, yes, I did attend that realignment conference in Sacramento, which Chief Probation Officers, the Sheriff's State Sheriff's Association and CSAC, I was able to give the welcoming speech and help run some of the panels. The interesting thing for me is when you get a lot of these people off to the side, whether it be sheriffs, probation officers, they want to talk about how messed up it is and how they were taken advantage of, and what a bad deal it is, and then you put them on a panel, and as long as they have to do is say great things about how their programs are reducing recidivism, and there's, and there's a lot of good programs out there, so I'm glad they can finally acknowledge that.
All right, thank you. Okay, before we go to public comment, which is a timed item, I want to briefly entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
With the exception, I'd like to pull out for discussion items three and five, to be talked at together as a group, and item 10, and I'd like to recuse myself from item number 14.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on, so-
And I'd like to talk about item number 12 a little bit.
Okay, so item 12 is going to be discussed.
So, I'd move to approve the consent agenda minus those items that are being pulled, which is three, five, 10, and 12.
Okay, second for it?
Second.
It's been second, moved to second. Any public comment on the consent agenda item minus three, five, 10, and 12? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, within that consent agenda was a proclamation, recognition of National Family Caregivers' Month for November 2013, it's number nine on the agenda. Supervisor Hemmingson has that, if you could read that, please.
I can, I think. Where as family members, friends, and professional home care workers devote themselves to providing in-home care for their relatives, loved ones, and clients, during National Family Caregivers' Month, we recognize and thank the humble heroes who do so much to keep our families and communities strong. And whereas in-home caregivers are a vital pillar of our nation's long-term care system, enabling millions of seniors and people with disabilities to continue living with dignity and self-determination in their own homes. The work of these caregivers requires immense compassion, attentiveness, understanding, and a deep commitment to the well-being of others. And whereas California's in-home supportive services program serves nearly 500,000 clients, IHSS workers preserve quality of life for those, for these individuals, save taxpayer dollars, and prevent more costly hospitalization or institutionalization. And whereas in-home caregivers have an immeasurable impact on the lives of those they care for, but their hours are long and their work is hard. Many family caregivers are unpaid, and most home care professionals receive modest compensation. They often put their own lives on hold, sometimes sacrificing more lucrative careers and other life opportunities because they are dedicated to lifting up those in need. And whereas National Family Caregivers' Month is a time to reflect on compassion and dedication that in-home caregivers embody every day, as we offer our appreciation and admiration for their difficult work, let us also extend our own offers of support to them, their loved ones, and their clients. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors that November 2013 is National Family Caregivers' Month in Del Norte County. The Board of Supervisors honor and supports the work of in-home caregivers in our community, and encourages all residents of Del Norte County to pay tribute to them for their exemplary service to our community. Passed and adopted this 12th day of November 2013.
All right, is there someone here to accept the proclamation?
Yes.
On behalf of all the providers in Del Norte County, I want to thank you guys, and with the support, hopefully, we can find the funding for much-needed training, and thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we had our timed item now as a public comment, which is item 19 in the agenda. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and identify yourself into the microphone. Richard? You need to come up to the microphone. People in the audience, and also people at home, have no idea what you're saying unless you're speaking into the mic.
This is public comment time, but you people didn't finish something. You pulled some items from the agenda for discussion, and you didn't go back to those items.
We will, and you do have a chance to address each item when that, when we do vote on them.
Okay, I want to bring up something that I recently learned about because of the collective memory of Janine. It's my understanding that an agreement that was signed by Tim Goodman may have expired or will expire next year, and that's the current agreement with Fish and Game that calls for our Parks Department to maintain their property. Recently, my city went in there, vacated the homeless that needed to be vacated from state property a long time ago because it is a day-use area only. The question I'd like to ask the Board of Supervisors today is, I believe, if my county moves forward with Hobbs Wall, that it's time in that area, that is a day-use area, that Fish and Game steps forward and starts maintaining that area. When I first moved here in 1990, the Sees had just completed that area, and it was a respus for me- a respite for me on a daily basis when I came home and had to de... Well, kind of enter the real world after working all day at Pelican Bay. But for years, Fish and Game has not come up with a master plan for that area. The friends and the certain other groups focus on the Talawa Dooms and forget about Elk Creek, and that's sad. It's time that this county demands Fish and Game to step forward and present what they're going to do back there.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Victoria Dickey. I live in the county, Mr. Finnegan's district. I'm sure that you have heard about the water protests and that it was a failed effort on the part of many of us. I believe that a tremendous portion, maybe more than half, of the people that are serviced by the city are in the county. I don't like the way the city does business. I don't have any control over them. I can sign my little protests, but the way Prop 218 is set up, it really doesn't seem to work well for the people when there are apartments and so forth, because they get like two votes, and there may be 300 people who are paying water bills because of increased rates and so forth. I am wondering if there is any way you could look into the potential, I don't know any, this is a real question, is there a potential of possibly contacting Smith Water? Burshell, we're out there, we have to pay for pipes every month already, and it, when I contacted the city, their response was, "Well, yeah, but you've got to pay for the pipes to get it to your pipes." Well, but I'm sitting here going, there must be a better way to run this. They've got to be making some bucks, because, you know, I can't help if they don't run it well, but they've got to be making at least half of their money from us out in the county. So maybe it's financially feasible for us to look into some other kind of servicing. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I am going to close public comment, and we have a building and maintenance department presentation, that was a timed item. So Ed, while you're getting set up, I will entertain a motion to accept the two budget transfers that are in the agenda.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Okay, those items are item 17 in the agenda, which is 11-01, and item 18, which is 11-02. Any public comment on those agenda items? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Sheriff Sullivan?
Yes. Okay. Ed Fulton, Superintendent of Building and Maintenance, take it away.
This is going to be an overview of staff and areas that we do clean. I'm going to start with the maintenance part of building maintenance in parks, and as you see, we have four full-time maintenance workers. This is the, basically, the daily and monthly duties of our department. We take care of the heating and cooling of all facilities, lights, locks, windows, skylights, do some painting. Some of the stuff we do that may not be, people may not know, we also take care of the fire alarm systems and the sprinkler systems that this building has, the sheriff's office, juvenile hall. Some of the other activities that building maintenance parks do, we also work on the elections every other year, and that's basically one full week that we use to help our county clerk elections department, the day before, the day of, and the day after. And usually at the Friday at the end of the week, we still help with elections. We surplus county equipment, we do recycling on Fridays, we also do a lot of moving of files and records, and the last one, I brought that up because of the desk that some of the offices, they need to be raised and lowered per employee, so there's a lot of ergonomic work that we do weekly. Here's our six custodians of all of our facilities, and they all maintain multiple facilities every day. This is the basic duties of a custodial person every day, is they clean, they seal wax floors weekly, sometimes monthly. They do the building security, it's very important, a lot of people don't realize it, especially the nighttime custodians, they're the last line of defense for the county, making sure the windows are shut, doors are locked. These are now going to be all the maintained facilities that we do in building maintenance and custodians. And as you see, there are quite a few of them. Sheriff's Office Jail, it's a 24-hour facility, takes up a lot of our time. The courthouse, we still do work in the public offices of the DA, county offices of the DA, victim witness probation, and the law library do maintain those areas, including the heating. There are some more maintained facilities that we take care of. As you see, there is a lot of different areas for the building maintenance and custodial staff. Juvenile hall on here is also another 24-hour facility that we maintain. Some of the other facilities that we do some work at when requested, usually just a couple times a year, we just spent re-changing locks at first five last month. The airport, we do check the generator on a weekly basis. Sometimes during the year, we do go to borrow, and the lighthouse. For the parks, we have two full-time workers. This is their basic, their duties weekly. Most of their duties is trash removal. They do that three times a week. Here are some of the park facilities that they maintain, landscaping, and trash removal. We have the three campgrounds, we have the playgrounds, and we have the skate park. There's some other parks facilities that they maintain. Most of these are public accesses, so we maintain a lot of places for the public to access, rivers, and the beach. And Wavecrest, a lot of people don't know, it is in Smith River, and it's basically a path to the ocean. Hamilton Park is a park in Huyche, excuse me. And we do have two boat ramps in Clamath, and one in Smith River. We do have a playground access in Hunter Creek. So it's basically a very quick overview of the building maintenance and parks.
Any questions from board members?
Nope, good job.
Good job, Ed, good presentation. Any public comment? Okay, I'm going to close that, and thanks, Ed. Okay, we have our, we're going to our next timed item, which was number, or is number 21 in the agenda. It's a timed item for 10:40, District Attorney's Office presentation. Ms. Mix?
And good morning. My name is Catherine Mix, and I've been in the District Attorney's Office since the beginning of 2005. I was promoted to Assistant by Michael Reese in 2007, and I have been the acting District Attorney since April of this year, and I'm very honored to have the opportunity to explain to you, the supervisors, as well as the public, what the office of the District Attorney So the District Attorney's authority is mandated by the government code, and bottom line is that the District Attorney's Office prosecutes all crimes on behalf of the citizens of the county of Delnart. We represent the people of the state of California, and we represent the citizens of Delnart for any crimes occurring in Delnart County. The DA's office is divided into four divisions. There are the prosecutors, which are basically the front line, there's myself, as well as four deputy district attorneys. Then we have the Investigations Bureau. We have two full-time investigators, and we have one part-time at this point, and we have a vacant position as well for another part-time investigator. Then we have the Victim Witness Office, I'll talk about them later as well, and our support staff, which is really the core of the office, they do most of the day-to-day handling of cases and keep all of the attorneys on track, which I can tell you is not an easy job. First, I'm going to talk about the Prosecution Division, which consists of myself, as well as the four deputy district attorneys. I handle all of the charging, we get reports from law enforcement, and I make determinations of what cases to put in the system, what cases to reject or refer back to the law enforcement agencies that sent them over. I also, because I am involved in all of the charging, I keep a handle on every case that we have going, and manage the deputies, assist them in making offers, assist them in trial prep, and also handle all of the administrative duties at this point. Then we have Deputy District Attorney Lisa Speckio-Wolff, she's been in the office since 2007. Her main assignment is to handle any prosecutions that evolve from occurrences in Pelican Bay State Prison. So she works with the court liaison officer out at Pelican Bay, and she handles all of the inmate prosecutions. Additionally, she handles our juvenile unit. Any crimes that are committed by juveniles in this county are prosecuted by Lisa. After Lisa, we have Anna Marie Padilla. She prosecutes most of our narcotics offenses. She specializes in the very confusing and nebulous area of the law known as green dope or marijuana cases. She's been to some trainings, she's worked very closely with our felony investigations unit, and she handles the majority of those cases. Additionally, she handles sex crimes with my assistance, and I didn't include that on the slide, but she handles domestic violence cases. We treat those in a vertical manner, they're not handed over to different deputies. One deputy handles them from start to finish, and she is in charge of that. Then we have Deputy DA Todd Zaki, who came to us via Tulare County. He's a very experienced prosecutor, he's done many homicide cases, and we're very lucky to have him, and he handles most of our general felony crimes. And finally, our newest addition is DDA Rebecca Linkus, and at this point, she's handling general misdemeanors and also has picked up some felony work. Our cases all start with a report that's generated by a law enforcement agency. All of the law enforcement agencies within Delnart County submit their reports to the District Attorney, and basically that's the initiation of any possible criminal prosecution. The DA's office reviews reports from the sheriff's office, the Crescent City Police Department, UROC Public Safety, CHP, Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, not just Pelican Bay, but we also receive all the reports that generate from Alder Camp. We take reports from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Cal Fire, State and National Parks. Our investigators generate reports, and any other agency conducting investigations within Delnart County, we have reviewed some from beverage control, other state agencies, and so any law enforcement report about a crime comes to the DA's office with a request for prosecution. Just wanted to touch briefly on the standard for filing a criminal complaint. The standard for an arrest by law enforcement is probable cause. Was there probable cause to arrest this person? And then, when it gets to my office, to my desk, my decision is a little different. Each report is reviewed for sufficient evidence to decide whether or not this case can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt at jury trial. When I sit down to charge a case, I think about, can I sit in front of 12 people and prove it beyond a reasonable doubt? And so that is what's in my mind when I'm making a charging decision. The DA basically has three choices when reviewing a report that's generated by law enforcement. Number one, we can file the charges in a criminal complaint, which initiates prosecution. Number two, we cannot issue the criminal complaint right away. We can refer the report back to law enforcement and request further investigation be done, or provide some further information if we don't feel like there's quite enough to go forward at that point. And then finally, we can reject or decline the case for a number of reasons. One of those might be doing a diversion program for a low-level offender. And we receive a lot of reports for drunken public, especially from the city police. We don't file on all of those right away, we'll give people a chance to do some diversion program, or we'll wait until they get a couple arrests. So basically, the two most significant tasks to be completed by the prosecutors in the office are to review all of the requests from law enforcement agencies, make that charging decision, and then proceed to prosecute the case once a complaint has been issued. I'm going to go over the stages of a typical felony prosecution. First, we would file a complaint, and along with that goes all of those charging analysis that I've already discussed, and with charging, we have to track down people's priors, we have to try and figure out the best way to charge them, especially given the realignment issues that we've come up against lately. And so there's a lot that goes into the decision to file a complaint. We need to know a lot about the person that we're charging, we need to know about the victims, and the impacts. Second, after filing of the complaint, we go to pre-hearing appearances. Normally, there will be some sort of bail hearing, whether or not the person is in custody or not. Sometimes the defense attorneys will file motions to suppress based on their thought that the law enforcement agency did something wrong. And then, after that, we will go to a preliminary hearing, which is at the point where we first put on evidence, and basically, we're just presenting enough evidence so that the judge finds that there's probable cause or a strong suspicion to believe that the person that we've charged did commit the crime. After that, we'll file another charging document called an information. After that, there's more pre-trial appearances and motions. Finally, we get to the plea or trial. Most cases do resolve by way of plea bargain. Those are usually back-and-forth negotiations, we take all sorts of different things into account. Each case is looked at on its own merits, and if it doesn't resolve by way of plea, then we're prepared and we go forward to trial. After trial, we then do sentencing, which has gotten to be a very lively area, because even when somebody pleads, we normally don't set a sentence, that's up to the judge. And so sentencing is a time where we can file pre-sentence briefs, we can ask victims and family members to come forward and speak at sentencing, it's a pretty important stage in the process. And finally, nothing is ever final, it seems, we have post-trial and appellate issues. My office handles appellate briefs on misdemeanors. The Attorney General's Office takes the felony appeals for the most part, but we do writs, things like that. So, done with the Prosecution Division, now I'd like to talk about the Investigations Bureau. We have our investigator, A.C. Field, who's helping me today. He's been in the office longer than I have. He's in charge of administration of the investigators, post-compliance, and general criminal investigations. He's our go-to guy in the office. He's also the go-to guy for a lot of the local law enforcement officers, they come to him for help with search warrants, certain financial investigations, he's a real asset to have. Then we have Investigator Dawn Walker. She's over at Welfare Fraud, assisting over there in their investigations, as well as prepping reports to provide to my office for prosecution of welfare fraud. And then we have Investigator Joe Collins, he is a part-time investigator, he's a retired CHP, and he does the general criminal investigations. When I talk about investigations in our office, they do many things. Their authority is independent of other local law enforcement agencies. Our investigators are the ones who go out when officers are involved in shooting incidents, when there's officer-involved fatalities. Our Investigations Unit does those investigations, we just had one of those recently, although it wasn't fatal. And they also assist all of the attorneys in trial prep, sometimes pre-charging investigation, although typically that goes back to the law enforcement agency that generated the report. But we rely on our investigators on a daily basis, both to track people down who don't want to cooperate with going to trial or testifying, and also in getting further information that we need to present a case to jury. The next division is victim witness. And this is a very important service that is covered under the umbrella of the DA's office. It's really incredible what the staff of victim witness is able to do with a very short amount of resources. Basically, crime victims have a resource to go in. They have an ear. They have somebody who knows where they can go to get assistance with things. And our victim witness staff is led by victim witness coordinator Allison Baxter, who's present today. And we also have chat advocate Rhonda Steele and a legal clerk advocate Cindy Wade. And that's the only staff in that office. And they provide crisis intervention. They provide emergency assistance. They provide resource and referral assistance, follow-up counseling. We rely on them to help victims come to court. They will sit with victims in court and family members. They are very helpful for us in keeping victims and family members informed of court dates, when things happen in court. They also follow and prepare restitution orders whenever somebody's a victim of a crime and they suffer some loss. Victim witnesses assist with that. They assist with applications for victims of crime, provide childcare during court proceedings, assist with funeral arrangements, and help with restraining order applications. So there's the victim witness unit and then also the child abuse treatment program, which provides services to children affected by crime. That includes therapy, transportation, court support, and assisting with stay-away orders. So that's our victim witness office. And finally, I want to talk about the support staff. Really, this is the hub of the office. I know mostly the public hears about the decisions that the prosecutor has made, but really, day-to-day, it's the support staff that makes things happen. All of our files have to be checked in when they come back from court to see when their next court dates are and also what needs to happen for trial. Subpoenaing witnesses is a huge part of that and our staff takes care of that. Our support staff consists of office manager Chris Powell. She does most of the felony tracking and does all of the administration/budget work for the office. We have legal clerk Diane Collins, who does Pelican Bay and misdemeanors. Denise Delgadillo, who does the initial intake and filing of all the complaints. And then we have our front desk and juvenile clerk, Jesse Soderland. So those are our divisions. I want to talk briefly about our education and training program. We see a lot of crime coming out of the local middle school, high school, alternative programs and schools. And we brainstorm about what we can try and do, other than just filing complaints and prosecuting people. Is there anything that we can do to get out into the community and try to do some education or training? So, for the last six years, the DA's office has educated middle school and high school students about cyberbullying, sexting, and just bullying in general. Investigator Field goes to the high school, gives presentations to all of the freshmen about these issues. And he's very well-received. And he gets out there and we're trying to make some changes, especially with all of the new technology and how children are using it to abuse and bully their fellow students. And this year, we used funds within our own budget to provide anti-bullying bracelets to the entire freshman class.
Thank you.
You take a shot at my team. Well, they're better than the Steelers.
So, being a member of the DA's office for many years now, it's interesting how every four years, or whenever something happens with the DA, the office is criticized. And often, there's rumors that abound about what is or is not being done in the office. And one thing that I wanted to touch on, that I've heard several times lately, is that the DA's office isn't filing cases. So I asked my staff to prepare this slide, which talks about the number of cases filed, which includes traffic court, like driving on suspended license, things like that, and any in custody's. And so, starting in November of 2012, the Del Norte DA's office filed 90 criminal complaints. And you can see, it goes month by month. I started in April of 2013 as the acting DA. And you can see, we filed 120 cases. Last month, we filed 145. So the office is functioning. It's functioning well, I can assure you. I am extremely proud to be a member of the district attorney's office. The prosecutors are experienced. They're knowledgeable. Their integrity is beyond reproach. And I am very proud to say that I work at the Del Norte DA's office. And I think that the community as a whole should be very proud as well. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Katie, back on that other screen, if you can go back to that. The number of cases have been the same or actually a little bit more in terms of what since you've taken over, basically?
That's correct, which is why I was very surprised when I've heard the feedback that we have not been filing cases, because that is absolutely untrue.
Okay. Any questions for board members?
No questions, just a comment. I mean, great presentation. If there's anything understated, there's the victim witness and the chat program. Allison does a great job.
Absolutely.
We commend it on that.
You know, Katie, I hadn't met you before today. We talked, but I don't think we'd actually physically met until today. And it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
From my constituents, they tell me there's less drama and there's, things are moving along nicely. So I think you bring a sense of calm to the department, which has had a very high profile. And I can just commend you on that. So, I just would ask you rhetorically, do you have all the tools you need to do your job? I know you're kind of filling in. And Rebecca just started, is that my understanding?
Yes, Rebecca just started. And for a couple months, we felt the pain of having one fewer bar card in the office. But at this point, I am, I feel like we're fully staffed. Everybody knows their job. Everybody's proud of the job that they're doing. There is a lot less drama. And because I've learned the job from the ground up, I know what each person in the office is doing at any given moment. I have a real handle on that. And so I think that I have all the tools and that the office is running very well.
So, Rose Jameson?
Katie, thanks for stepping up.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job, Katie.
Thank you.
Well done. Thanks for the presentation. Any public comment?
Victoria Dickie, I live in the county. Out our way, there was a huge barn filled with drugs. The sheriff came out. He was there for a long time. Took a lot of people, took a lot of drugs out, made arrests on adjacent properties and other properties as a result of people coming in and attempting to buy drugs off of the officers as they were cleaning out the building. My understanding is that there was no, I believe there was no prosecution, nothing with reference to that. That building's probably as big as this room and it was full. I've never understood why that happened. What I read in the newspaper didn't make sense, which was that the new district attorney or acting district attorney didn't think that the law was clear enough. I don't put a lot of stock in what they say, but nothing happened. When you get that kind of a drug situation where nothing happens, then it says to all of the other people who are in town, no harm, no foul. Drugs cause a lot of harm that isn't pounding on someone else's head. Sometimes it's pounding on walls. Sometimes it's beating up things, including people, causing nuisances, all kinds of things. I would like to see a stronger stance taken against drugs. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and thank you for the presentation. We're going to go back, because I did miss this. We're going to receive a brief report from the county administrative officer. Jay?
Well, we, as, we discussed a little bit in closed session, and what will be coming out from those meetings is we've been involved in employee negotiations for a while. And we'll have a couple of agreements coming forward, I think, in the near future, depending on votes. We have closed out the 705th Street job and got final reimbursement on phase one of Point St. George. We have been going forward with some monitoring of our CDBG program. And we'll be having a meeting here real soon over the monitoring report. Working on employee evaluations and some miscellaneous issues that have been brought forward to the office, which are typical of each, each month or day. And preparing to review and update the capital improvement plan for the county at this point. And moving forward with some improvements that we may be able to do in the future.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. So, Rose Jameson?
Jay, did you say reimbursement on the first phase of Point St. George?
Yeah.
And how many phases have we done?
There's phase one and phase two. And phase two is not underway.
Okay.
Phase two is the construction portion of that.
Okay.
To the greater extent of the trail. Phase one, obviously, and this is probably not completely known, but most of the grants that we work on are on a deferral basis. So we do the work and then we get paid back after they've scrutinized and criticized and done all the work to hang on to that money for as long as possible. And then they pass it back to the county. Well, that work's done.
So, but you might give a little longer history of that, because I know you've been working on that since I got on the board.
It's approximately 10 years of work. It's ultimately to develop the coastal trail across the county-owned Point St. George property. The plan that was placed on Point St. George many years ago included that as one of the priorities. We've developed the parking lot at Gars Beach, which included new paving, new striping expansion, additional trash receptacles, signage. We also did some work for, on the guardrails, the fencing on both sides in order to protect sensitive areas. And we'll leave it at that. There's both archaeological and plants and animals. And so, yeah, it's been a, it's been a long time coming, trying to get through the first process so that we can get to phase two eventually when funding becomes available. But ultimately, it would allow the coastal trail to be completed through Del Norte County.
Yeah, but I know you've been, you've been working on that a long time and pretty hard on that. So hopefully, phase two doesn't take 10 years. But I think, dealing with the agencies and the different groups involved, I think that's what strung that out so long.
Phase one was not intended to be 10 years either. Jim Carnegie has been working on this and so has Barbara Drew and myself. And it's one of the projects that I held on to when I took over the CAO's job. And yeah, it's good to have that one behind us so that we can look to actually completing the project.
No, we appreciate your work on it. It's just, it's amazing when you start digging into the details of what the holdups and what delays things from happening so much. And a lot of times, the overlap of the agencies is a big reason for it, so.
Yes, there is a lot of agency interaction, a lot of government interaction with tribes and the county. And to be honest with you, most of that was relatively successful. It just takes a lot of time to get everybody's interests accomplished.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so at this point, we are going to go to the four items that were pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. So let's start with item three, which is proven authorized chair to sign the agreement, number EW-2013-06 with the University of California at Davis for eligibility, employment services, and welfare to work training from July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, not to exceed $42,060, as requested by Director of Health and Human Services. Dorothy, how are you doing today?
Yes, Dorothy, I did put up, and if you don't mind, I appreciate your addressing. Three and five are virtually identical, other than the, it's a relationship you have that Health and Human Services has with UC Davis. Could you speak of what this, what the protocol is and the, the overall presentation of this program? And then I would like you to address, my concern had to do with the total, and I've added it up, $78,000. Of course, this is state money. Is there no alternative to this kind of training on Skype or any kind of?
So, before she answers the question?
But they are together.
But before she, you're, number five also is the other one that we're bringing up at the same time, because they're pretty, pretty close to the same. And that's proven authorized chair to sign agreement number CW-2013-06 with the University of California at Davis for child welfare services training from July 1st, 13 through June 13th of 2014, not to exceed $35,550. So, go ahead, Dorothy. You're going to have to speak up to the, is your mic on too?
Okay. Both contracts provide for multiple staff to be trained. Can you hear me better? There, on the public assistance and employment training branch contract, approximately 60 staff are trained for an entire year. UC Davis instructors come to our facility, so it's very cost-effective and time-effective for our staff to stay here and have UC Davis come here and train them. There's very complex rules, regulations that are continually changing. So our staff are kept abreast of everything that they need to know to do eligibility activities for public assistance, Medi-Cal, and CalFresh. That's item number three.
So we're talking three. Chair Solomon, can I lump them together? Or do you want to talk about them individually?
You could lump them together.
Okay. So Dorothy, we're talking about 60 staff going down to UC Davis. You're transporting them. There's costs involved. I'm guessing this is somewhere in the neighborhood of about?
Actually, we're not. We're bringing the trainers here to Crescent City.
Oh, you're bringing them, you're bringing them here?
That's supposed to bring them here. So we're not incurring the expenses it would take to send 60 staff. But that's on contract number three, or item number three. The other, item number five is trained approximately 25 to 30 staff. So there's a total.
And is that the same arrangement? They'll be coming to Del Norte County?
Yes. Yes. The majority of the time, folks come to Del Norte County.
Explain that. What do you mean, a majority?
There may be something special offered in UC Davis, and so we will send staff, but that would be over and above those contracts.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so, been moved?
Moved both number three and five.
Been moved in second. Any public comment on these items? You see, you got public, or, oh, okay. Good, good time to stand in the middle of the motion. Tony, could you please pull the button?
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Solomon?
Yes. We'll go ahead and pull up number 10, which was the other item pulled under. And Dorothy sent your hair. We'll, we'll, proven authorized Del Norte County Department of Health and Human Services director to apply for the State Department of Health Care Services and California Endowment Medi-Cal outreach and enrollment funding as requested by Director of Health and Human Services. Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes, again, I pulled this out because of the holiday on Monday and the lateness of our getting our agenda. I'd like you to explain to the audience and on TV exactly what this program is all about. And if you can, talk a little bit about the California Endowment.
The, the request is to apply for funds, apply for the grant. So the grant, the details of the application have not been developed as of yet. Our request is for outreach and enrollment, funding to be able to reach the approximately 2,000 newly eligible Medi-Cal recipients in Del Norte County that would otherwise not come to our office. We will go out and actually help individuals that wouldn't make it to the office enroll, do the application, go through the application process. So the funding, what we're requesting to do is actually put Del Norte County in the hat for a possible funding of approximately $300,000 to do these activities for two years. California Endowment would help facilitate any costs that wouldn't be approved by that grant so that we could reach these individuals, which are also on their list of priority individuals.
Well, my concern is with this California Endowment, who has an agenda which I consider a bit, a little bit left to my core values. And how they identify those they wish to help is, that's a little bit startling to me. I'll read them to you. Young men of color, young men of color, doesn't indicate women. Persons who are in county jail and state prison, state parole, county probation. And my understanding is, is that they will provide seed money and then this will be a burden on the state. This will come on, on to the state level. That's my understanding in, in expanded government. come on, onto the state level, that's my understanding in expanded government.
Actually, these, the outreach and enrollment activities are for Medi-Cal eligibility activities, so once we go out and, and reach these folks, they will be on the Medi-Cal, the California Medi-Cal program, so.
If I could interject, it's not the California Endowment that identified these people, they were identified statewide, these are the people that fall between the cracks that have been identified that now that there is access to Medi-Cal and there needs to be a concerted effort to go find them. Benefits the entire community. Moved to approve.
In second.
Moved in second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Hammison?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Solomon?
Yes, and that, that was for authorization for the director to apply for funding, so it wasn't actual funding, so. Okay, that's been approved. Going on, we're gonna pull, item twelve was also approved by Supervisor Hammison. Prove and authorize staff to identify Union Street as a future project for right-of-way cleanup and request that Delnort County Solid Waste Management Authority get waived transfer fees on said cleanup effort as requested by Supervisor Gitlin.
Yeah, and maybe Dave can speak to this. This, Union Street is a project that we cleaned up some years ago, is that correct? Is this the same, same property, Ruth's property, is that?
Union Street is a hundred and eighty foot wide right-of-way that the county has and it's one of the reasons why I came to Delnort.
For Union Street?
Yep. When I was trying to decide what to do, what career path to make, I was reviewing the Daily Tripliquet online and on the front page was a picture of the disaster area known as the Ruth compound. I'm happy to report that I saw that and there was people saying there, there's nothing we can do, our hands are tied, it's impossible task, and I said, I love impossible task and this needs to be done. And it wasn't the factor, but it was one of the deciding factors, I said, these people need code enforcement the worst way and I'm going there. So, I'm happy to report the Ruth compound no longer exists, law enforcement no longer refers to Union Street as the Ruth compound, they now refer to it as Mason Park. That being said, all of the squatters, campers, homeless, criminals, layabouts, nerdwells are out of there, all of the illegal structures are gone. Excuse me. But we do have some reoccurring illegal dumping and recently I caught some people dumping back in there and filed that case with the DA's office. The people that we caught volunteered to clean up their mess and they made a half-hearted attempt at it. So, there's some remaining construction debris, but it's in the middle of the right-of-way and it's like an attractive nuisance. If those piles remain, more dumping will just be attracted to that pile and it'll grow because that's what happens.
Right.
So, Roger came to me and said, we have this dumpster, it's paid for, if it's not used, then it's pure profit to Recology Delnort because it's included in their contract. I said, well, it expires in December, I don't really have anything between now and December other than this pile of trash just lived at Union Street, so that's why I recommended it to Roger.
Well, I was just curious on why we, I understand that we have areas, civic shores is a perfect example where people start dumping and then they continue to dump and we have several areas like this around there, but we're actually setting up a dumpster here?
I think Roger has more details on that than I do because he's heading this up.
If I, if I may, Dave, first of all, let me tell you the genesis of how this came about. At our solid waste meeting, I was kind of doing some arithmetic at exactly how many dumpsters we have left for donation from Recology and we found out there was one. Now, this being a calendar year, it expires and we start anew with twenty new dumpsters effective January, so I approached Community Development, Heidi and Dave, and I said, look, we have one dumpster left, I've got volunteers over at our daily bread ministries, let's pick a project so we do not squander this dumpster and do a cleanup. So, we sat down in the conference room and we determined, and I let, I deferred to your advice, Dave and Heidi, that you felt this was a priority and then I said, well, great, then let's put it on the agenda. There is no cost to the county, there will be no cost to the county on this, this is simply an acknowledgement that this is the site we'll clean up before December thirty-first and that is where it stands at this point. So, I hope we can move forward with it, clean up this area and start anew with new blight removal effective in January.
Yeah, and if I may just add on to that?
Sure.
It's one dumpster, forty cubic yards, and you have got lots of other areas where a forty cubic yard dumpster wouldn't make a dent, but in this particular area, this particular situation, they would finish that cleanup of that construction debris that's serving as an attractive nuisance and if Roger's plan to get community volunteers from the neighboring community to help pick up this trash, then they'll start to take ownership in this area and we'll see the illegal dumping decrease, which is the ultimate goal.
I guess my, my point was is I thought this was all, I guess, already a priority and if Roger's saying that there's no costs, then why do we have to ask for transfer fees to be waived?
The dumpster, the pickup and haul off is covered under the Recology contract, not the disposal fees.
Right.
So, that's a matter for the solid waste board and that's something the board has to ask the solid waste board to do, I can't-
And that would be taken up at tomorrow's meeting on the agenda.
So, this would be contingent upon them approving waiving the fees because I don't have any budget for disposal fees.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem with, with the cleanup efforts, I think it's a, I think it's a, I think they're great projects.
Because we have funds set aside for cleaning up roadways that are maintained-
Right.
-because this is a non-maintained roadway, those, that doesn't apply, so we'd have to take it out of the general fund if we paid for it.
Right. Well, and that would be my concern is that, you know, the solid waste authority doesn't waive the fees that, that costs.
Then we wouldn't be able to do it, yeah.
That is precisely the case and we, in setting up this, you'll call the falling, the falling dominos, we wanted to set it up here on our Tuesday meeting in time to also set it up for the Wednesday solid waste meeting, hopefully the dominos will fall and then we'll have one area cleaned up and I'm hoping the first week of December.
And, and our staff time is limited to just providing the release forms for volunteers to work in the county right-of-way.
Mr. Mason, this does bring up a bigger question, though. If we could, by the meeting in December, get a list of your top ten priority sites in the county?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, because I, I would love to know what that list, because we're getting, things are being put on and obviously it's important to get things cleaned up and this seems to be an opportune thing to do this anyway, but I'd like to have a list because at least I know, you know, going forward, because we, I think we talked when you made a presentation before, it was a hundred and sixty properties in the county.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to know what the top ten are and even if you've got a brief slideshow of saying these are the-
Sure.
-because it would be good to bring some, some notoriety to those spots anyway, so at least the neighbors can get involved in that respect, so if you could do that for December, that'd be awesome.
Are you want that the first meeting or second meeting in December?
I don't know if we're gonna end up with-
First meeting?
It'd be first meeting, yeah. So, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve and authorize staff to identify Union Street as a future project for right-of-way cleanup.
Sorry.
It's been moved in second. Any public comment?
Could I ask you to do a friendly amendment to that, Roger, to ask, also request that the solid waste management authority waive the transfer fees of that cleanup effort?
Yes, so noted.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Tony, could you pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hammison?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item twenty-two, consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delnort, authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
We have no letters on the agenda today in regards to legislation at this point. We will have the ledge platform up on the next agenda or item.
Okay, so we'll go to item twenty-three then, which is the adopt the two thousand thirteen, fourteen Delnort County Legislative Platform as requested by the county administrative officer.
This came before the board a couple of meetings ago and there was some requests to make some changes to it, grammar and such, those changes have been made. I had asked for some comments on those in regards to any other types of wording changes. I did receive two of those that should be discussed or could be discussed today. Both of those now relate primarily to healthcare. Supervisor Gitlin did have a request to add some wording on last chance grade about an alternate route which has been included and the question regarding healthcare, Supervisor Gitlin's language was primarily regarding Sutter Coast Hospital which in itself doesn't generally lead into legislation unless there's some specific legislative wording. Now, if there's some changes here that the board would like me to pursue to put some wording in regarding the situation at Sutter Coast, that would be appropriate, but the wording currently, it, it reflects exactly what the board has already taken action on which is opposing the actions that Sutter Health has been working on. In regards to the other note that was submitted, it was submitted after the agenda was printed, Supervisor McClure submitted language and I think all the board members have that in front of you, this is specific to legislative, legislative issues and looking at reimbursement rates and formulas for Medi-Cal and Medicare primarily under the Affordable Care Act. So, those are the two considerations that are before you at this point unless anything else has come up. I believe that the legislative agenda as it is right now, the platform reflects what the board has placed as a priority in the past and reflects a lot of the issues that we foresee coming forward.
Okay. Any questions for board members? So, I believe Supervisor McClure's request was, and you all have the handout of that, was to add that into the ledge platform and what the addition was advocate for legislation and/or support implementation language to improve access to primary healthcare and adequate acute care services. By engaging in legislative efforts and implementation of the Affordable Care Act, remote rural communities could be recognized as a special reimbursement category. A remote rural reimbursement designation would increase recruitment and availability of healthcare, healthcare services and that's the proposal in response to the problem. Most reimbursement rate formulas are based on an urban-centric model which apply volume and average number of self-insured users to determine reimbursement allotments. Rural reimbursement formulas are based on community size but do not necessarily consider remoteness. Due to our remote rural nature of our community, due to our remote rural nature, our community finds it's, it's difficult to attract and maintain healthcare providers, we have a lack of primary care providers, specialists in psychiatric services, our sole community hospital is facing turbulent times with the ever-changing system of care, so any-
Do we wanna? Yeah, I would, I would move that we accept and adopt, pass along the recommendations for our county legislative platform, both state and federal, and include the healthcare proposal put before us.
Second. It's been moved in second. Jay?
Supervisor Gitlin's language regarding Sutter Coast, was there any adaptation the board would like to make to that? It essentially discusses the impact of lowering the hospital status beyond where it is now and I was wondering if there was any language that the board would like to add to that or would just continue with the opposition as the baseline.
I think, yeah. Well, well, Jay, I'm hearing you clearly and I, I am noting that we do have the opposition. I am suspecting this issue of Sutter Health and Sutter Coast Hospital will be discussed in a separate standalone item, so I'm comfortable with where we are right now and not including it on the legislative platform.
Okay. Because the board has taken a stance, prior board meetings opposed to regionalization and downsizing the hospital, that is our position and continues to be our position. Any public comment on, well, we've got a motion, we have a motion on the floor, any public comment on the legislative platform? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm gonna close that. Just for those listening and those in the audience, this legislative platform really allows us when we do go to Sacramento and we, when we're in DC, it allows us to convey the wishes of the community to our legislators and bureaucrats that we do come across and deal with, but it puts us all on the same page. There is not a, we're going off of this, this is what we're using as our genesis when we talk to folks, so we are not bringing something out of left field that the board has not agreed on, so this is a good thing for our advocate in DC also with Greg, Greg Burns and Van Soek. They need to know where we stand on issues and this is why this thing is very important to periodically review and, and have the board comment on and pass, so. Anything else you want to add?
Just, this document will be sent to all of our representatives as well as the advocates and anybody else who wants to get a better idea of what the Board of Supervisors has prioritized and how they feel and that's reflective of our community.
Okay, cool. Tony, could you pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hammison?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, that's been moved and approved and I think we've covered the whole agenda. Okay, at this point, I am going to adjourn the meeting and have a good day.